Good evening. Thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is August 16th, 2022. Our thought for today, when you throw dirt at other people, you only lose ground. This is exactly... I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Cowan if he would lead us in our invitation tonight, and I'm asking Commissioner Sanders if she will lead us in our pledge tonight.
Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you, dear God, for your blessings. Cowan, just pray tonight for wisdom, Lord, that you give us the grace and mercy, Lord, God, to help us make the right decisions for our county. Oh, we just pray for all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you guys so much. Our commissioners, we need to add an item seventeen A. Seventeen A. A loss update from the consultants. Seventeen A. A loss update from the consultants. With that being said, I ask for a motion that we approve the agenda, please. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five oh. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You may come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Fricks, 130 Cornish Trace Drives, Covington, Georgia, 30014. I'm here to speak on the unfinished business consideration of annex of... Actually, it says Flat Shoals and Gregory Road. It's actually Flat Rock and Gregory Roads. I want to speak against that. The city sent out letters to the residents adjoining the property and also posted property, a sign on the property, both having the wrong parcel numbers. It was indicated seven zero zero seven four nine zero zero nine. That's an incorrect parcel number. And as such, this annex should not go through because according to the Code of Ordinances, section six twenty dash zero two zero and section six twenty dash zero one five, notifying everyone of the public notice, that has not been done on this property. So it should invalidate the request and it should be restarted. But aside from that, if the county commission chooses to overlook that fact, I'd like to just go over why this goes against the county comprehensive plan. In 2006, the committee got together and made a comprehensive assessment of the county for future plan. It was updated in 2018, signed by Chairman Marcelo Baines. And the purpose was moving forward to provide an update to the plan, signed by the commissioner. And this update was to serve as a planning and decision-making tool and guide for local government officials, for property owners, and community leaders. One threat that was identified in these recommendations was a national, unnatural and cultural resources, outlining the fact that there has not been enough emphasis placed on utilization and preservation of natural resources. The committee identified the area dominated by Lake Varner as a character description of Flint Hill. The future vision of this area was to be a mixture of rural communities tied closely to the preservation, recreation, and conservation of Lake Varner. The implementation strategies were to include: Establish and enforce natural buffers. Conserve lands around Lake Varner to ensure high water quality. Protect tributaries by adopting wide natural buffer standards and enforce strict erosion sediment controls. Encourage private investment in areas of exposed rock as conservation areas. Appropriate land use identified was agriculture, residential, parks and rec, and conservation. There, Flint Hill was noted to include several large areas of exposed rock, which hosts many rare and endangered plant species and some federally protected.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Good evening.
My name is Matt Crowe, 843 Cornish Mountain Road, Oxford, Georgia. I'm up here for the same reason Brian is, to kind of tell you my history. I was born and raised here in Covington, and I have set my roots here, and I want to spend the rest of my life here. And I want my children and my grandchildren to be here the rest of their lives. And I want the best for my families and for your families for generations to come. Newton County, years ago, I was on the board, I mean, on the Chamber of Commerce. We had a vision for this county, and it was to bring more industry in, more residences in. That happened. Industry has come to Newton County. We have industry. You know how we know we have enough? Because you can't go by a single industry in this county and it doesn't say hiring out in front of it. The high-density housing that's coming into the city, it's a great thing. But at some point in time, we need to say that enough is enough because every one of y'all took an oath to the citizens of this county to do, to serve in the best interests of its citizens. And so each one of you need to think hard about what those interests are. Go out into your communities and ask your citizens, what do they want? I went to planning and zoning and asked them to get with the Board of Commissioners and the City Council and put it on the docket for the November election. Get together, put five questions out there as to what we want. Do we want more high-density housing? Do we want more industry? We want retail. I agree. We need more retail here. That is a given. But at some point in time, the traffic is going to become an issue with the quality of life here, as well as everything else. The fifty-five acres in question, the gentleman that owns that property already has quite a few acres out there, from what I understand. This already is owned him too. Why not list, if he's going to develop it, let's see how that goes with what he has. And then if the community agrees that it's a good thing, we can always annex it in later. But if y'all give up control of that property, the county, you no longer have control. And you've done the people in your district and all your districts a disservice. So that's all I had to say, and I hope y'all will vote with your hearts and your head. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good evening. My name is Carla Hooper. I live at forty-five Carmody Circle, Covington, Georgia. I've been a resident here for over twenty years. I'm here yet again, not because I want to. Many of us moved our children into dorm rooms. I did that last week. And then I came home to a call that I need to do a wellness check on my mom down in Arkansas. But then I also am here. I started with that to let you know that we have lives in Newton County. We don't come here for show. We don't come here for a hidden agenda. So we are here for the third time, asking you to consider not accepting the appeal for the developer who wants to put in a tenth gas station on Salem Road. There are nine gas stations within a one-mile radius. If this developer continues to go forward with this appeal, I would ask you to ask two questions of yourselves. Number one, if this committee would like to grant a special exemption, what should be the criteria? I would believe one criteria to submit an exception would be, does this exception benefit the community? Number two, does this exception meet a need? Number three, is it filling a gap? Special exceptions are special for a reason. This gas station does not meet a need. It does not fill a gap, and it's not a desire. I sent you over two hundred and seventy signatures of residents who've asked us, please do not put another gas station in this area. I ask you to consider those signatures of the residents. Finally, there is a bigger issue with this gas station. This gas station falls under what's called allowable use, which you guys are familiar with. This allowable use for this gas station was granted thirty-plus years ago. I believe that when that was done, those who did that knew that this commission would take into account and not turn a blind eye to the development that has taken place in thirty years. In thirty years, eight gas stations have been in that area. They would consider the quality of the air in thirty years. I know you guys are smart, because I've been in these meetings and I've heard you. I know that we don't turn a blind eye in thirty years and say, well, just because it falls under allowable use for a gas station, we'll put one there. I would encourage the attorney, and I'll probably contact them, to really see if that is the case. That allowable use means that any industry can come in based on something that was stated over thirty years ago. And finally, to Salem Road, I believe that we should consider every permit on Salem Road and the fact that Salem Road will be widened in the next two years. Every permit should consider that widening, or those developers were asking you to pay for an easement. Think about it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sky Hendrickson, ten thirty, One Wood Drive, Covington, Georgia. I want to speak about the gas station on Salem Road. Again, my name is Sky Hendrickson. I'm a veteran. I was in the Persian Gulf. I served my country in many hostile areas. I was part of a U.S. Naval Construction Group known as the CBs. I've been deployed to Middle East, Desert Shield, Desert Storm. I've served in those areas and seen a lot of things a lot of people don't need to see. I'm giving up my right to the right of patient confidentiality. Basically, I want to say I'm a patient of Dr. Jim at Anchor Point that is right in that area where that gas station wants to be. On behalf of veterans who I know and who I've served with and people that go to Anchor Point for counseling, for PTSD and other issues, being a veteran, I feel that adding in this gas station is going to shut that place down. It's not going to give that area a feel of safety and calmness when we're in there talking to Dr. Jim. So please give it consideration of what you're taking away, along with what you want to try to add with that gas station and convenience store. Because we do have a lot of gas stations and convenience stores in this area. Why do we need another one? They're so close together. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
I am Dr. James Sennelbach, and I have a doctorate degree in psychology. And I am, while I had prepared, I had been here once before to appear before you on behalf of my facility, which is called Anchor Point, that would be destroyed by a gas station next door. So if may, I'd like to just read this very quickly. And I want to thank the veteran who was just up here. He was saying that he gave up his right of confidentiality, patient confidentiality, just to speak on behalf of the veterans, he himself being one and myself being a veteran. So I previously appeared here in opposition to the proposed gas station as it would profoundly and negatively affect the health care services, which Anchor Point has been providing for over twenty years. The practice provides mental health services directly to veterans with PTSD and trauma and to civilians with similar disabilities, including anxiety, depression, and grief counseling. Anchor Point uses very expensive equipment for electroencephalography, hemoeencephalography, and biofeedback, along with appropriate talk therapy. There are only two other facilities that offer this array of services. One is in Alpharetta and another is in John's Creek. I had previously presented a statement from Dr. Stephen Porges, an international expert on trauma. And he wrote, "Trauma victims don't want to go into noisy places because the low-frequency sounds scare them or make them feel unwelcome and uncomfortable." A gas station adjacent to my facility would create an environment that will nullify my ability to provide the required care for these men, women, and children that we have served for so many years. We would have to close our practice. I pointed out that there are thirteen gas stations along Salem Road corridor and a fourteenth ready to open. And that one is located six tenths of a mile north from our site. Half a mile. There is no need for one more gas station in that vicinity. And I ask you to consider that seriously, and I appreciate your attentiveness. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, sir.
Another dignitary is, my name is Gladstone Nicholson. Live at four nine five Lakeside Circle or Fairview Road near Salem Road, maybe a half a mile from this proposed fiasco of development, or redevelopment, I should say. I joined with what my other neighbors have said and also with what the CB veteran has said, you know? The CBs have had a long history, going back to World War II. And I'm glad that I'm on his side in this matter. I will say this. Another gas station would be a horrible addition to this neighborhood. Reason being, I don't see where it would add anything positive to the future development of this area. We have these things called, what do we call it again? Never, I'll go back to that. We have neighbors who are opposing it steadfastly, not only here, but also in the Planning Commission meetings. Our Commissioner, District Three, Commissioner Sanders, has also voiced her opposition to it. So I just ask, as a board considers the appeal from this developer, or redeveloper as it may be, that you consider also the sentiments of your constituents, all five districts. Because if we talk about one Newton, and I don't, I can't see the sense of the Commissioner in one district voting for or against a project and commissioners in the other district, not least giving some commission courtesy to see what that commissioner sees as being best for his or her district. So again, I just ask you commissioners to consider what the folks in this neighborhood are concerned about. And, you know, we all talk about two seventy-eight looking great in the future. If we put another gas station on Salem Road, I hate to say, we can see this as a shining moment for our decision-making. So I again ask you all to consider nothing but turning this appeal down. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Citizen comments is closed. We're going to move into the chairman's report. We have Ms. Hodges here from Liberty Middle School. Her and her students from FCC LA. Guys, if you would, please come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We just wanted to come and say thank you. We were back here May of this year, presenting the information or the great opportunity for our students to compete in the National Conference at the FCC LA Conference in San Diego. And we have a little token, and I'm going to let my students say there.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Carson Lowe, and my time at the NLC was unbelievably amazing. And it will never be forgotten. From start to finish, it was full of fun and excitement. We learned so much from all the displays, workshops, to exploring San Diego. We visited one of the world's largest zoos and ate one of the world's best tacos. Some, sorry, saw some of the most beautiful beaches, went whale watching, and most importantly, placed fifth in the nation. This is an experience that I thank you all for having, for giving the opportunity for all of us to have. And on behalf of Emily Armandez, who is unfortunately not here, she would say to you all, Dear Covington's Board of Commissioners Office, my experience at the National Leadership Conference was extraordinarily fun, and I learned more than I expected. One big thing that I learned was time management. I can use this skill to help me plan my schedules and to help get things done without it being late or last minute. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, judges. My name is Connie Costin. And when we went to Nationals, we were able to do amazing things. If you guys hadn't funded us, we wouldn't have been able to show our amazing products, our projects, and we wouldn't have been able to win our medals. Thanks to you guys, we won our chapter one second in the state, in the nation. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Parsons. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of you for the help and support you gave us to get to San Diego. With your help and support, we were able to get top twenty in the nation.
Wow.
Hello, my name is Carla Thomas, and I would like to say thank you for your donation for me to attend to the NLC in San Diego, California. I had an awesome time, and my partner and I came in second place in the nation. We also got a plaque for second place and a gold medal. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Delmaid Duncan, and what I learned from NLC is teamwork and cooperation and patience. I've learned that, sorry, I learned that...
It's okay, sweetie.
I learned that it takes my time on what to do, how to do it, and...
That's right.
It's all my fault.
All right. Y'all give her a hand.
Good evening, all. My name is Nina Ware, and I competed in the Chapter and Review Display Project. If I had to describe my experience at the National Leadership Conference in one word, it would be unreal. I made memories and learned lessons with my FCC LA chapter that I will never forget. Thank you all so much for this opportunity.
Hi, my name is Zamaia Dillamar, and I'm Georgia FCC LA's Region Six Officer. At the National Leadership Conference, I presented a workshop, if you all remember. At this workshop, I helped members help with public speaking. It was very amazing, and I just want to thank you all for helping my members in this organization. Thank you.
So we, our chapter, we have tokens of appreciation. We have a plaque for all of the commissioners. And it says, "With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor the commissioners for your distinguished service and unconditional commitment and support of youth leadership." So, and unfortunately, we had a little mishap downstairs. And so one of them, we have to replace the glass. But we are, we are going to present these to Commissioner Ronnie Cowan. Commissioner Stan Edwards. Commissioner Alana Sanders. Commissioner J.C. Henderson. And last, but certainly not least, Chairman Marcelo Baines. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it. And as you heard, their memories and experience at NLC will last them a lifetime.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms... Yeah. Hang on one second. Yeah. Thank you so much, Ms. Hodges, for all that you do. I know you've been doing this for a while. You've been building young ladies, so, not only young ladies, but listen, you do a wonderful job in this community, and we are so blessed and lucky to have you. Girls, we're so proud of y'all. Thank y'all for going to represent Newton, represent Newton County very well. So thank you, guys, and congratulations. Guys, it's seven twenty-nine. We are calling for zoning at seven thirty. I'm going to go ahead and take chairman's privilege tonight and do another, do this proclamation because this young man is definitely a blessing to have in this community. And we're going to ask, Stefani, if you are here, if you would, please come on up. If you want to bring your family with you, that would be, that would be great. I know DJ, are you, are you here?
DJ Coach, I don't know which, which one of y'all want to? You want to? Yeah. We thank you guys for having us tonight, obviously. Obviously, it's a great opportunity, have a great recognition for a young man who's done exemplary work both on and off of the court, been an example for a lot of the young people, not only in, on our basketball team, but in our school, and even for some of the younger kids coming up. So we're just excited for what he's done so far and excited for what he's going to do. But even greater than that, we're excited for the young man that he is. So we thank you for you guys and this opportunity.
Thank you so much. I'm going to, I'm going to read this proclamation right quick. It said, "Whereas Stephen Castle is an exceptional athlete and a phenomenal basketball player, he is a high school senior who plays for Newton High School Rams, located in Newton County, Georgia. And whereas Stefani excelled in his position as guard and has been honored as 2022 Region Class A..." been honored as 2022 Region Class A VII Player of the Year. And whereas Stefan exemplifies leadership when he forged his team into an outstanding basketball season, as a result of the season climax with competing in the Final Four of the 2022 Georgia High School Association State Playoffs. And whereas Stefan was selected as one of the only 12 players in the country to represent the United States in the 2022 International Basketball Federation, FIBA U-18 Championship Tournament in Tijuana, Mexico in June 2022. And whereas Stefan Castle secured his position and true, as a true leader, when he and his teammates won a gold medal in the 2020, 2022 U.S. Men's U-18 National Team, they defeated Brazil with the final score of 102 to 60. Now therefore, I, Marcelo Baines, Chairman of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, along with the city of Covington, do hereby, and the Newton County Board, and the Newton County School System also proclaim that August 15, 2022, is Stefan Castle Day here in Newton County." Can y'all give him a hand, please?
Thank you, everybody. You all have a slide?
Yep, yep, yep.
They're all right side up?
Yep, yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Ms. Applewhite. Ms. Applewhite. Thank you. Okay, okay. Guys, we're going to move directly into zoning. Going to ask Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We have two cases today for zoning. Our first case this evening is rezoning. It's REZ 22-000009, located at Lloyd Road. The total parcel size is 18 acres. Tax ID is 12-057. The existing zoning is agricultural. Existing land use map is rural residential. The proposed zoning is AR, agricultural residential, is located in the Murd Creek Watershed and Commissioner District One. And our petitioner today is Mr. Robert Stansfield, and the property owner is Lloyd Marlin Itell. So the applicant's intent is to rezone 1.81 acres of parcel 129-057 from A, agricultural to AR, agricultural residential, in order to subdivide out that portion, the 1.81 acres. So the original parent parcel is 18 acres. It's located on the north side of Lloyd Road, and it's currently undeveloped vacant land. And the rezoning request is part of a mediation settlement agreement in Superior Court. And so currently, what you have in agricultural zoning, the minimum lot size is 10 acres. So they will have to rezon just to subdivide out 1.81 acres, which will then be combined with Moore's parcel. So this was first heard by the Planning Commission on June 28, where it was, there was a vote to table the petition to allow more information and clarification to be done in regards to the rezoning. And then on July 26 last month, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning request by a vote of three to zero. So this is aerial view of the parcel, and this is the 18 acres. This portion here is in the county. This is the 1.81 acres here to be rezoned. Well, just a portion in the county. This up here is a part in Mansfield. So part of this new parcel is going to be combined over here. It's going to be part in the county, part in the city of Mansfield. Current zoning is A, agricultural. Future land use map is rural residential. It is in the Murd Creek Watershed. And this is the survey that was created, and you can see they're combining the two parcels. This is the big 1.81 acres to be combined over here. And it corrects where the house sits. It's now going to sit squarely on the correct parcel, and then over here as well. And in conclusion, so given the fact that the property is zoned A and in close proximity of similar existing zonings, such as agricultural residential, along with the applicant's proposed uses of the land, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning is appropriate for this site. Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved agricultural residential conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And our first recommendation would be one, well, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, minor plat subdivision of the newly created parcels must be submitted and approved by the Department of Development Services, and that's to approve the combination once it's rezoned. And any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before construction or development on the property. If there are any questions for staff, the applicants are here.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now for the applicant. You have 10 minutes to speak in favor. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor, you have two minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Robert Stansfield. I'm an attorney here in Covington. I am accompanied by Brian Moore. Brian is the interested party that's pursuing this zoning. In addition, his wife Connie is here, and Patrick and Estonia, Patrick Middlebrooks and his wife Estonia are also going to be impacted by this zoning. So 20 years ago, nearly, two properties were authorized by Newton County to be built on Lloyd Road. Those buildings were, those homes were built. They received certificates of occupancy. They were sold. Turned out, those two homes, the home Mr. Lloyd is in now, and the home that the Middlebrooks have lived in, excuse me, Mr. Moore, I have a twin brother, and I've been called the wrong name most of my life, and it slips out sometimes in other people's names. I've told Brian that before. Mr. Moore's home and the Middlebrook home are not built on the land that they bought at closing. The Middlebrook home is entirely on Mr. Moore's property. The lot that they bought has nothing on it, and Mr. Moore's house is on the property of the Lloyds next door. And if you looked, and you probably didn't see it, but in the tax map, when it showed the parcel, the green parcel was agricultural, the colored parcel was, if you look right now up there, there's a little rectangle sticking out of the green parcel. That's Mr. Moore's house. Even the tax map recognizes that his house is where it is, but it's part of his property. So fast forward many, several years ago, 2018, a lawsuit was filed by the joining owners, the Lloyds, and they're, they're, it's a family, the Lloyds. There's four property owners. Mr. Henry Lloyd is here. To my knowledge, he's the only local Lloyd member. We had a lawsuit, we had claims and counterclaims. We went to a mediation, and we entered into a resolution. And that resolution was that a parcel of property was going to be purchased by Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore has an agreement with the Middlebrooks, and everybody at the end of this transaction will own the land upon which their houses are built. So it's an absolute nightmare that's been around for a long time. This settlement is to resolve that. We were delayed with the Planning Commission because Mr. Henry Lloyd had an objection that we are working to resolve. When it came before the Planning Commission a second time, Mr. Smith asked Mr. Lloyd if he objected to the zoning going forward, and he said he did not object to the zoning going forward. I subsequently sent to the attorney for the Planning Commission a packet of materials. Mr. Yagstad, I have copies, if you'd like to have those. You've got them? Okay. Dealing with that, the survey that we are using was approved by the attorney for the Lloyds. The documents that we've prepared along the way have been approved by the attorney for the Lloyds, and the Lloyds signed the consent forms for the zoning to go forward. If Mr. Henry Lloyd has still an objection, and it deals approximately with 15 feet, as best I can figure, a length of a boundary line by 15 feet in the road, then there's a manner for resolving that 15-feet issue in our current Superior Court. We have a motion pending to resolve that. So what we'd like you all to do is to approve this zoning so this settlement can go forward because whether it's the 15 feet in the road or not, this property has to be rezoned to affect the settlement. So if Mr. Lloyd's objection has legs in front of the Superior Court Judge, the zoning still has to go forward. If Mr. Lloyd's objection doesn't have legs in front of the Superior Court Judge, the zoning still has to go forward. And it's just, this is the time for us to do it. It's taken a long time to get to this point. There will be no further construction. This is not a development project. So when you're looking at those special conditions, those are non-events. These homes are built there. If there's new construction, it's going to be for an expansion or an addition on an existing home. It's not a subdivision. We are trying to solve a problem that should have never occurred, but it did. And we're trying to bring to an end a lengthy problem in litigation. And I'd ask you to approve this zoning for all those purposes. It is merely reflecting the facts on the ground. These homes have been there a long time. Let's bring them into compliance with the zoning. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Please state your name, your address. Four minutes and 53 seconds.
My name, my name is Henry Lloyd, and Mr. Stansfield has sent me a map of the previous land, and he's trying to show that the survey could, I mean, possibly could, could be wrong. And I haven't had a chance to go over yet. He just sent it to me at 6 o'clock today. And, but I would have no problem with the survey going through. He'd, he would, he's agreed to meet me Friday, and the only thing that we will do is discuss that whether it will be $50,000 or $50,500.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, or?
No, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? That portion of public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone wants to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on back up. I think this is actually in District One. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve rezoning case number REZ 22-000009 with staff recommendations.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So Patrick, your, your conclusions align with Mr. Stansfield on this particular piece of property?
We reviewed all of this very soon after it went to the Planning Commission meeting. And I do think the, now, I can't speak to whether the surveys or what they agreed on or not, but I can speak to all of the other facts of the surveys. The zoning would not impact the settlement at all. I've read the settlement agreement. The, the surveys achieve the purpose of the settlement agreement. There may be some discrepancy, but a discrepancy won't harm anybody in this instance.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. So our second case this evening, it is the appeal case to OSPEC 22-0002. So the actual appeal case name is APP 22-00002. The applicant has actually requested that we withdraw this without prejudice, if the board so desires.
Commissioner Sanders.
I have a question for legal. If it is withdrawn, what is the next step of the process? Will they come back before the board, or what is going to occur?
If they want the special exception, they would have to come back to the board. But keep in mind, the spec, special exception was only for the orientation of the building. And I'm going to make sure, and Ms. Applewhite gets me, is correct about this. The use of the property is authorized under the current zone.
That is correct, and the exception for the orientation and the parking setback.
So if they're able to redesign the building in such a way that they don't need a special exception, all they're going to have to do is apply for their permits and proceed with their development.
That is correct.
So a short version, it may or may not ever come back to you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appeal from the applicant as stated. Oh, withdraw, the repeal. I was approving, I was approving that he could appeal, but withdraw.
Second, second. It's been motioned that we approve the withdrawal by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passed 5-0. Thank you so much. I just want to revert back over to the county manager's report. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we'd like to report out our monthly, monthly activity for the month of July. Go ahead, Brian. For the month of July, we held our second coffee and conversation with our employees, the county managers, coffee and conversation meeting. We also participated in a roundtable discussion with local leadership and representative from U.S. Senator John Ossoff's office on July 26. We met with the 4th District U.S. Representative Hank Johnson while he assisted and participated in our inaugural Chairman's Cornhole Tournament, which we had great participation from our employees. We also had one of our local vendors, Scoops, participate with us on that day. For our animal services department, we reflected an increased intake was extremely high. We had 25% increase in comparison to 2021. We had 97 adoptions for the month in July, the third highest ever. We also established a partnership with Plan Pet Hood and now we're able to offer kits from the Orphan Kitting Club. We had 289 visitors to our animal shelter in the month of July. For building services, we completed setup and tracking software at multiple facilities, which included painting and renovations at the public works. We replaced the HVAC system at Gum Creek. We installed the new water fountain at the fire station administration office. And we also completed installation of a new elevator firebox at the parking deck. For developmental services, we had 104 permits issued in July with a total revenue of over $95,000. We issued 13 new, two new licenses and eight renewals with a total revenue of over $3,300. We had 21 zoning applications with revenue collection of $3,500. We received six planning development applications with revenue collected of over $14,000. Total revenue collected for the month of July, $117,177.2. Code enforcement had 84 complaints and violations and we closed 43 of those and we issued six citations. For elections, we had 1,600 voter registration cards for the month of July. For EMA, we continued with our assistance with emergency preparedness. We also assisted the FFA camp. We participated in Oxford's Independence Day Parade. And we are also preparing our social media campaign, campaign for the upcoming September Emergency Preparedness Month. Finance, we passed the military rate of 9.454. We processed over 1,300 invoices. We issued 603 checks totaling $6,347,595. We processed 59 purchase orders and we also completed our quarterly ARPA report to the U.S. Department of Treasury. And we also started our fiscal year audit. Fire services, we continue to work on our design phase for the forestry facility for renovation. And we continue our conversation with the local school system about creating a fire service curriculum for our students. GIS had 24 maps. We received 24 individual maps and we had three requests for GIS data that was processed. We also, next month, we'll present to you all upcoming about our L-MAG app, which we will post on our website, which our residents, residents can see activity as far as GIS and what's happening in public works, such as what streets are being paved, what streets have been paved and just upcoming activity with public works. Human resource, we had 219 employees that participated in our annual wellness benefits. We had 474 employees, the raises that were processed in the month of July. We onboarded five employees. We had nine employees left for organization and we processed 659 eligible employees deductions for the month of, payroll deductions for the month of July. IT, our employees' training participation rate was 76, 76%, which is up from 69% from June, which is a reflection of our IT department making sure that we are in compliance and doing things to protect our infrastructure. Information services staff also had 184 supportive tickets for the month of July and we also completed 10 hours of online training. Parks and Recreation, we gave out 550 book bags at our back-to-school event that was held on July 23. We've had 5,200 visits in our recreation center. We had 1,062 members paying to use the gym, the cardio room and indoor track. We also had 391 participants for our football and cheerleading, which is really good. We had 34 participants in our cheer camp, 24 participants in our volleyball camp, which is a max. And we also continue to stay busy in our splash pad, splash pad. And for PIO, for the month of July, we improved our viewership of videos utilizing our 4K technology, which we implemented recently. We also had our most popular videos in July were how to, how to adopt a pet, which totaled over 1,400 total views on Facebook and YouTube. And we also had a campus paradise, which had 869 total views on Facebook and YouTube. We also had 534 more views on uploaded videos and we had 351 more views on live stream. Public Works, we had a total of 399 work orders by the district. We had District One had 117, District Two 51, District Three 78, District Four 55 and District Five 98. We had L-MAG projects completed in the month of July. Miller's Lane, Winchester Drive, Rockery Ridge Court, and we started work on Cypress Point. Trash pickup for the month of July, we had a total bag count of 3687 and total times taken to the landfill is 16.29. Senior Services, we had 49 seniors that participated in our Legacy Museum Tour, traveling to Montgomery, Alabama. We had 35 seniors that participated in our Zoom nutrition class that was conducted by Open Hands Atlanta, held on July 26. We also highlighted that I really would like to recognize, we hosted our annual 90 and above launching on August 5, where we celebrated our seniors who were 90 years of age and above. It was a very successful event. And we also, seniors provided more than 1,700 onsite meals and delivered meals. We had 216 visits to our senior citizen and we had 27 scanned and events and activities for senior services. Solid Waste, as of, as of 8/16, we had a total of 4926 convenience center hang tags. This is amount that's on trend to match last year of 5,006. And we just also would like to highlight what's happening as it relates to COVID. As of August 20, August 16, total cases, 27,060 cases, total cases in our county. And our current rating reflects a high according to CDC. That is the month of July activity, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. I do want to take opportunity to say that we did have a wonderful time with the employees. It was a great cornhole tournament. Thank Congressman Johnson for coming by and actually participating. He actually made a couple of them.
He did.
He did. I also want to thank Attorney Lindsey for pushing up the reward. Two guys in public works actually won a thousand dollars. So that was, that was, that was, that was good and they was, they was excited about it. So it was a, it was a great time.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. C. Jarvis, I want to thank you for sending me a, a card to me of exalting my birthday. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Jarvis, what is the, there is a link, I was informed, where the citizens can see the statements, checks written or various things. Do you happen to know what that link is or where is that located on the website?
Yes, I think it's, the link is under the transparency on the website.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is unfinished business. This was tabled back on August 2. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. You want to do it? Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll let, we'll let Patrick do it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So y'all will recall, y'all will recall that on August 2, we discussed in great detail the proposed annexation by the city of Covington. And the matter was tabled and I think it was appropriately tabled. We were able to gain some additional information since that meeting. The first thing we, we think we have determined, we think we have figured out, and this is similar, relates to one of the comments that first speaker tonight said, that the, the notices that went out, the advertisements that went out weren't terribly clear about where the property being annexed was. And I have displayed on the board the property that we have come to believe, that I have come to believe based on reviewing surveys and speaking with the, the attorney for the proposed developer, where the property to be annexed is. So if you look at the map that's displayed, the sort of the western boundary, so the purple or the pink area is existing city limits. The Flat Rock Road goes from sort of the middle bottom left up toward the top center and that forms a very small portion of the western boundary of the property. And then there's a little loop at the top, which is Gregory Road, which forms the northern boundary. And then it's an odd-shaped area that swoops down to the south. And it actually follows a, a stream, a stream that runs through the property. My, my little green drawing does not accurately follow the screen, but it gives you a good, the stream, but it gives you a good idea of what the property to be annexed is. So we were able to determine that the property to be annexed did not go all the way to Gregory Road, did not encompass those entire tax parcels. It encompasses a smaller subset of the tax parcels. The second thing we were able to determine, I was able to conclude based on the application that has been prepared, I'm not, it's unclear to me whether it's been submitted, but it's been prepared for development of regional impact, that this portion of the property, the, the annexed portion of the property will be combined with the remaining property primarily to the west, that large pink rectangle, to be a relatively large industrial manufacturing facility. We are not, I'm not clear what the uses are. I don't know if those uses are set in stone or if it's going to be a speculative development. There is a traffic report that accompanied the proposal and the traffic report does acknowledge that there's a substantial amount of new traffic that would be generated by this project at buildout, but it will be primarily a straight shot from the interstate to the property and back. It's not going to involve a lot of local traffic. So from that standpoint, the likely traffic impact is at least relatively centralized. It's not going to get into neighborhoods and such as that. The, the concern we expressed at the initial meeting about the impact on Lake Varner is essentially resolved for now by our confirmation of where the boundary to the actual annexation is. So the annexation kind of follows, roughly follows the watershed. So this, this water will flow into the existing stream and will flow away from Lake Varner. But as, as is with all waters, it all flows to a large body of water. And it will be a substantial, there will be a substantial amount of groundwater, impervious surface and such dealt with. But just, just like you know in all the developments you approve, developers are required to manage that. So there would be a requirement that that developer through the city's ordinances manages or her stormwater. We have come to understand that this project is likely part of a much larger project that potentially could be this developer or an associated developer and loop around into a large residential development to the north and to the east, potentially to be adjacent to Lake Varner. There have been some indications that we have picked up that there is a potential plan in the future to annex that property, but we can't tell you for certain that that will happen or won't happen. That's, that's going to be, that's a lot of, not our decision to make, but I did want you to be aware of that. And as I indicated to you before, that there is an opportunity for you to object to this annexation. Objection to an annexation is reserved to some very limited, limited specific instances. You are permitted to object to an annexation when the property, the proposed land use of the property is a more intensive use. And as we discussed before, this property will go from your agricultural zoning, which is the least intensive use, to the city's industrial and manufacturing zoning classification, which is one of the most intensive uses. The, the next basis is whether there will be an increase in expenses to the county associated with providing services. All their enhanced infrastructure costs with this project. And the answer to that, the best answer I can give you is, we don't know for certain. I can tell you there will be water service and as you all know, we sell water to the city. The city then sells that water to the end user. There was an estimate in some of the documents we were provided that indicates that the, the water use at buildout of this entire project could be in the vicinity of 1, 1.2 million gallons per day, which is a lot of water. But all of that would not obviously be attributed, attributed to the annexed portion of the property. And there's no way for us to tell you how much is on the annexed property and how much is not on the annexed property. Other than that, I, I can't, as we sit here, identify any other increased costs related to infrastructure that the county will incur. The city will be required to provide infrastructure otherwise to the property. The city will assume, will, when the DRI report, when the, when the regional commission issues its report, there will be a list, likely to be a list of conditions that are intended to offset the impacts of that property. And the city and the developer will be responsible for those impacts. Some of those impacts will be on county property and there's no obligation on the county to, to accommodate those impacts. So to the extent there are obligations that fall within the unincorporated area, we'll have to have conversations with the city or the developer going forward to figure out how to fund those obligations. So you do, again, you do have the right to object. This property does trigger the land use objection. You're not required to object based on land use, but it does authorize you to object based on land use. And that's for you to hear today. The deadline for, for our objection is likely in about a week, week and a half. And I say likely because it's still unclear to me that we, the notice that we were provided accurately describes the property, but I don't want to get into that. I don't want to, I don't want to take a position that it doesn't accurately describe the property. And then if we dig out the surveys and have another survey review them, they tell them they do accurately describe the property. So the safe thing to do is if you, if you think this is something you want to object to, the safe thing to do is object to it. Now as far as whether proper notice was given to the adjacent landowners, that's really the city's concern. That's not our concern. That would not be a basis for you to act or not to act. The basis for you to act or not act, to object or not object are those standards I, I just provided to you. If you object, what will happen is this, this, the objection will be transmitted to both the city and the Department of Community Affairs. The Department of Community Affairs will convene an arbitration panel and they will essentially conduct a little trial over whether our objection was or was not valid. They would render a decision and the, and the annexation and the zoning could proceed or not proceed according to that, according to that decision from the arbitration panel. And there is always the opportunity to resolve any of these disputes by negotiation that goes along. We have not made any effort, have not had any of those conversations because I don't know what the board's position is and I can't really do that until I know the board's position. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, let's get a motion on the floor. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, but I'm not sure exactly what a.
You got to make a motion to object or make a motion not to object.
I want some more information from Patrick. I want to ask, I want to ask some questions.
Yeah, you can, you can.
I want to make a motion to discuss and I'd like that.
It's been motioned that we discuss this, and by Commissioner Cowan, and seconded by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? Commissioner Cowan.
Okay. Uh, Patrick, the...
Yes, sir.
Two square blue areas.
Further, further to the north?
Yes, you mentioned something about them.
So those parcels were, I did, that is part of the same tax parcel as the little humped parcel outlined in the green?
But they are not...
They are not part of the present annexation.
Okay. Now, the green area there, the majority of that property is, well, it's, it's mostly rock. It's not even suitable for building.
Right, and there's also a stream that runs through, and you can kind of see on the southern part, does this have a pointer? I believe you. Okay. This little area right here, if, if it were, if it were a better aerial map and I could zoom in, right through here, there's a little bit of a stream. And there's going to be, there's no designated wetlands, at least as shown on your tax map. But there are, there is some wet areas, probably not jurisdictional wetlands, but some wet areas that will probably be difficult to develop, to develop. The site plan that's actually was in your package shows most of the development in this area, the proposed buildings. This is, I don't know that there'll necessarily be any buildings sitting here, but it would just, this parcel would just be part of this overall development.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was told there would be somebody from the city here. Is anybody from the city of Covington? Could you, uh, give me some information?
I, I guess what I'm asking is, what does the city want to do at this point?
The city does not have a role in advocating for this project or not. The city is simply here to bring forth the application that the applicant brought to us. The city sees this as an opportunity. In fact, the part that's up at the top there, um, that is the, I believe referred to as a tortoiseshell at the last meeting, that's future land use industrial below that. The county actually doesn't have a future land use for a big chunk of that property. As the attorney just stated a minute ago, there's only a small fraction of this portion of the overall development, which was submitted as the, part of the DRI, excuse me, which was all submitted to you last time. This, this was all submitted to, to the board last time, just for the record. And the DRI is complete. The DRI had nothing to say in regards to, uh, this annexation. The DRI is for the, the larger industrial project, but this small portion, you can see the, the pink tracks to the south there. The applicant owns quite a few of those tracks, a couple hundred acres. The portion of the overall development that would be on this is minimal to nothing. And a lot of it would actually be buffering the industrial development from the surrounding development as well. But, uh, I, I, I'm not here to advocate on behalf of anyone. I'm just here to bring forth the application that the applicant brought to us, and my job is to present that all to you this evening.
Okay, one other question, I guess. Uh, pretty substantial development here. Does the city, are they going to have the sewer capacity to handle this?
The city's working on a sewer upgrade that does work into this. It, it's part of the applicant's responsibility to make that a part of their development, but that comes further down the line. Um, an annexation doesn't have the, the same construction drawings or analysis that construction plans would have down the road. That would be on the applicant to make sure that that's feasible. Um, I know this applicant's been working with the city because the applicant does own, um, quite a bit of property around this area to make that a possible, or to make that feasible for the overall development, uh, but that would come at a later date.
Can you, can you talk into microphone, please?
I'm done with him. I want to go back to Patrick.
Sir, can you give us your name, please, for the record? And you did say the city, um, you said the city's in favor of this. You said the city sees an opportunity for this?
The city has not weighed in on this. The, the county's responsible to make the decision first. The city's responsible to bring this forward. My name is Mark B. Chuck. I'm the planning director for the city of Covington.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patrick, what you said a while ago was that if we deny this, uh, or we object to the, to this annexation...
We used to do.
Uh, then that goes to an arbitration panel at DCA.
That's correct.
And they can look at this and say, this is consistent.
We would all put up evidence, and that, that panel would make a decision about whether our objection is a proper objection or not. And if they find our objection is, that our objection is not a proper objection. In other words, if they find that we're objection, objecting to problems that aren't significant and don't really exist, they would just reject our objection. They could also find that our objection is appropriate and raises real problems that have not been addressed, and that panel could, could essentially reject the proposed annexation. And, or they could go somewhere in the middle, and they could say, well, there are some problems, and here's the things that ought to be done. And they could essentially impose conditions upon the annexation that would have to be complied with, so.
Okay, there's already a substantial amount of acreage that can be developed in this plan.
All of this entire parcel, which extends a, a good bit to the south, is already annexed and presumably already zoned for the proposal. Right.
Now, if, um, if it's, let's suppose it's denied, or that we object to the annexation, how long before the petitioner can bring it back?
Well, if, once we, once we make the objection, the, just the DCA kind of takes over. And there's, we have the whole process with the DCA, which is going to take a few months. Um, the applicant could withdraw the request, and my, my recollection is that they would be barred from bringing back another annexation request for the same use for some period of time, maybe six months, maybe a year. I'll have to double check that. As I sit here, I'm not sure I can tell you. That'll, may.
Okay. Do we want to hear from the petitioner?
No, no, who need to make a decision?
Yeah, there's no need to hear from a petitioner. So the way the law is set is that when the city receives an application, they are required to send this to you. Whether they want to, whether they want the annexation or not, they must send it to you within like five or 10 days of receiving, receiving the application. So there's really no app, you don't have an applicant. I mean, there's no applicant before this board, and the city's not even an applicant. The city has received an application. And so they, their duty under the law is to send that to you for review and consideration. So it's really, it's, it's totally up to you. It's, it's left, this is not like a zoning decision where you're called upon to hear public input or apply all the factors. It's just for you to determine whether the impact on the county is such that requires an objection. And, and I read this language before, and I'll read it again, that in order for you to make a proper objection, you should determine that the proposed annexation results in a material increase in burden on the county based on the proposed change in zoning and land use, the proposed increase in density and the infrastructure demands related to the same, as, because the proposed annexation results in a substantial change in the intensity of allowable use of the property and a change to a significantly different allowable use. And that's really what the issue here is, is, is this a significant enough change in the allowable land use that you think it will cause harm to the county to the extent that you must object?
Okay, that's all the questions I got.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. C. Question I have is, did I've been a, um, a part of, of a few objections on parts of the property, especially, I think, social circle and, and others, when I think on highway 11. In every annexation that I've seen that we've had, that we objected to, we lost. And the only people, in my opinion, who profited from it was the attorneys who was doing the objection. I think the best, for, was, what is best for us is to go ahead and, and annex it into the city of Covington, to allow them to kind of, uh, talk with residents or whomever. And just so they, uh, maybe they move this, this property, I mean, it's, and it's a, and move it forward. And once they, uh, if they could move it forward, that would take a lot off of us, because really and truthfully, I, I worked over there 24 years, and I sat this last meeting. Most of that property, or at least half of it, is nothing but rock. And I don't see how it's going to mess up Lake Varner and our water source over in that particular area. And I, I think we need to get this one to the taxpayers, say, hey, it's time out, spend our money, just throwing it away. Because I can remember we spent several thousand, several thousand dollars on the so, uh, social circulation. And guess what? The next, we won, but guess what? The next day or two, the laws had changed, and we still, still lost. I think this should be something that this board should take under consideration.
And I'll, I'll agree with you with that, Mr. Henderson. You, you should absolutely consider the costs that, that you would incur in pursuing a challenge, because it would be, I mean, it's, we're basically trying the case. And I would also agree, Mr. Henderson, that, I, I, I don't know what the statistics are at the Department of Community Affairs, but I would bet the overwhelming annexation objections are probably, maybe not overwhelming, but most of them are probably resolved in the favor of the annexing city. Um, that's just an unfortunate outcome of the way this system is set up. But also, keep in mind, you know, this is your only opportunity. So it's, it's important that you be aware of both of those facts, all of those facts.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, Patrick, would you agree that most of those, uh, that large percentage that is ruled in favor on the annexee are have, are not facing what we're facing now in terms of a 180 in, in terms of use of property? Is that what you stated earlier?
I, I would suggest that this is a pretty drastic change in land use. You're going from agricultural to heavy industrial. Um, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, that's most of them. I, I, that wouldn't be an honest thing if I were to say that I agree or disagree with that. I just don't know. But I'll tell you, most of the ones that we see are, are usually not from, you know, one end of the spectrum to the other. But also, I would suggest that most of the ones we see have a more obvious and direct financial hit on the county. For instance, it's going to, it's going to be a big development that's going to dump a ton of traffic onto our road, and we have to manage that. And their traffic report suggests that while traffic is increased, it's primarily going to be, be increased on state highways and, you know, and, and there's a fairly direct route. But, you know, this is one of those projects, until you know, you don't really know, traffic projections are just that, they're projections. But this is a pretty drastic change in land use, absolutely a drastic change in land use.
Thank you, sir. Got to seek, uh, seek a motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Uh, well, there's, there's some things that are bothering me. One was the wrong tax parcels were presented last time. Uh, I haven't seen a traffic study, and again, I'm not sure where they are on sewer capacity at the city. Uh, that was always a problem when I worked there, too. So I'm going to make a motion since it's known that DCA has an arbitration review. I want to make a motion that we deny this.
You're going to make a motion that we object to this, or not object?
Yes, we're going to make a motion that we object to the appeal, uh, and then allow the petitioner to exercise his remedies.
And Mr. Cowan, if I could, is your motion to object to the annexation based on the infrastructure demands and the substantial change in intensity of the allowable use, would that be the basis of your objection?
Yes.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you know, I've, I've seen it for a while, and I, and I've, um, seen some few objections. And I think it's, um, you know, we'll see in, in the, in the future. You're just taking, um, you know, money that we could be spending on other areas in our community, and we just taking it and throwing it away. Just, thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Patrick, one of the statements that was made was it could cost money in regard to legal fees. How long do you think this would take? Because I'm pretty sure it would be our law firm probably be involved in this, and it would cost us more money than would be allocated for legal fees. So what is your roundabout figure or time, amount of time that attorney would spend fighting this, that would take taxpayers dollars?
I, I'm not sure I can give you a, an even remotely accurate estimate on fees. It's just going to depend on what we find as we dig into this. From a time standpoint, that's really up to the DCA. They, they do all the scheduling, but it would be a few months. You know, a few months. I mean, what, what, is this going to be, you know, this isn't going to be six figures or anything like that. I mean, it's not going to be, uh, you know, it's not going to be like a... It depends on what you view substantial. It's going to cost money, and it's not going to be cheap. It is going to take a good bit of work. And it could be, you know, the work could be to make a pretty presentation to the DCA, and they reject us. That could very well be the, the outcome. And we'll also have to have, it'll take up some time of your staff. Your staff is going, I, I can't do it alone. Your staff is going to have to assist in the gathering of data, the gathering of information, the preparation of exhibits, and things like that, either your staff or consultants.
Which is also a scary situation, because a lot of our employees in Development Services have left the company, the, the, the government, our, our county. So we are looking for people for that area. So that's concerns me, because we're talking about DCA. We already know DCA takes a long time to get with the people with their running mortgage assistance that have been waiting for six or seven months. So that's attorneys sitting there for six or seven months who are, no offense to you, hey, it's your job, make your money. But they're sitting there for six or seven months who are getting paid, and this is taxpayers' dollars.
That's right.
So that's my concern, and I hope everybody hears that. And we don't have the manpower in Development Services, and we're going to have to probably pay a contractor or contract some people out. And I actually went to Development Services today and saw it for myself.
So Patrick, you saying y'all going to be working directly on this project?
I would, I would think so. We do these fairly routinely.
Every day for six months?
Oh, no, it won't be an everyday thing. It'll be, it'll be like a, it'll be like a lawsuit. There'll be a flurry of activity early, there'll be a flurry of activity late, but that in-between section is usually, while, while we're waiting, we're waiting.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just kind of want to express, um, to this board that it probably isn't the best idea to make a decision based off of what our legal fees are going to be. Uh, this board has actually denied several, um, things such as this nature. It may not be exactly like that. Uh, but we have denied things because of our citizenry has made decisions that maybe this is not the best thing for, uh, that specific district or that specific area. Uh, this board listened to that citizenry. Uh, we made a decision, uh, and that individual that was, or that applicant went back and actually filed a lawsuit against this board that we had to actually fight. Uh, so when we denied previous, uh, situations such as this, we didn't discuss legal fees. We discussed what does the citizenry believe would be the best for our community. And I think at the end of the day, that's what this board should focus on. Is this going to be more of a harm to our community, or, or is it going to be more of a help to our community? And so I think that's what we need to base our decisions off of, not what our legal fees are going to be. Because we've made decisions in the past that caused this board to incur legal fees that we... legal fees that we probably really shouldn't have, but we did anyway. So, I just want to put that out there to this board. Let's look at what's going to be the best for the community and what isn't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I, I hope and expect that individually each of you and as a body you and your staff are making that cost benefit analysis every time you call me, because, you know, it does cost money. And so, I don't get, you know, I hope, I hope before you ask for our services, someone is thinking about, does, does whatever that service is going to cost serve the county and serve the citizenry? You should actually, you should make that, I mean, it shouldn't be, nobody's sitting down with a calculator, right? But you should make, that should be involved in the calculus of your decisions somewhere.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Patrick, for your statement and providing us information. If we listen thoroughly to our attorney, who is the only one who's the officer of the state to speak for us, he stated that this not caused any harm to the county, and he also bases stipulations. I don't need anybody to speak for me as a commissioner, because my constituents voted me in to speak for myself in the district. So, he stated what would be a harm and so forth. So, as a commissioner, it is my fiduciary responsibility to ask about the finances of the county, to find out what it's going to cost the taxpayers if we move forward. It's also my responsibility to ask questions if we, this goes to DCA, will the county be sued? So, yes, we are going to make decisions in this county, but I do not, as Elena Sanders, need anyone to speak for me.
All in favor? All opposed? It's pass three, two. Thank you. Next, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussions? All in favor? Five oh. I got, I got it. I'm gonna take an opportunity now to use chairman's privilege to bring up our lost consultant. I do understand he got other business that he have, that he has to be at pretty soon here, so, sir, if you would, please come on up. Commissioner, this is 17A on the agenda. We're gonna move it up to now.
And before Mr. Eves starts, I'll remind the board that I think it was at the last meeting you authorized us to retain him to perform this report for your lost negotiations, and this is the report that he was retained to prepare, and he's going to present it to you tonight.
Thank you for being here today, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you heard, I was, my firm was engaged. My name is Doug Eves. I'm with Eves Consulting Group. We specialize in tax equity studies, service delivery, and we do lost negotiations every 10 years as they come up. We were engaged to conduct an analysis to help the county prepare for your lost negotiations that's currently ongoing. The negotiation process was to begin by July 1st. The county had the initial process to call it at that time. After July 1st, any of the cities could have called it. You had to provide notification to the municipalities and the DOR commissioner. That started a 60-day negotiation time clock that you had to complete the initial phase of the negotiation. If no agreement was reached, you had to go into some form of alternative dispute resolution, either mediation or arbitration. We always recommend mediation, because it has a, it tends to continue the negotiations where arbitration has a tendency to halt the discussions between the parties. Now, if no agreement is signed and approved by December the 30th of this year and in the hands of the Department of Revenue, the lost will expire. If the lost expires, it would require a new referendum by the county and the cities as part of the lost special service district to reengage the lost. Or the city has, the county has options that the cities do not have. You could engage a homestead option sales tax as a replacement of lost. It's not something that we recommend. It's a long, drawn-out process, but it does tend to benefit your residential homesteaded properties as opposed to the way lost does. And we can discuss that in more detail if the commissioner has any questions on that point. But the, the expectations and the hope is that the county and the cities will reach the lost negotiation during the process that you're going through. The purpose of lost is to provide property tax rollback equal to the amount of revenue that you receive from the lost. In fact, that's condition preceded of the tax, is that you have to roll back the property tax on all of the digests, both the county and the city on their tax bills, for the purpose of assisting each political subdivision in funding all or any portion of those services which should be provided by the governing authorities. And I shortened this quite a bit. I've, I've submitted entire PowerPoint presentation for your consideration to use during your initial meeting, but for the sake of brevity tonight, I've tried to synopsize just the key points, and then you have my entire report that I believe was handed out tonight to the, to all of the commissioners to review, and then we can always come back together and answer any questions that you might have, because we do have to prepare a, an opening offer to get into the next meeting. And that's, I'm gonna make my recommendation tonight when I get through the last few slides, and then I'll wait for the guidance and direction of the board of what position you want to take, and if, if you want me to go to the next mediation and make my entire PowerPoint presentation, which would be the case, supporting the county's position on what your lost should, lost share should be. We look at three negotiation issues during the whole process. Is it fair and equitable? Does it provide a fair and equitable tax relief to all the entities? Does it meet the express intent of the General Assembly? And the express intent is that during the negotiations, you have to look at the current service responsibilities, the changes since the last negotiations, and the current distribution. And to make logical, the current distribution that was arrived at in 2012, and does it meet the current service needs of the communities, of the county and the cities? And have the changes that have occurred since 2012 driven a need for one of the parties, in this case, the county, to receive more of the lost distribution? One of the first things we look at is equity, and that comes under the condition preceded. There's case law that says that the General Assembly has found that the lost applies to, the local option sales tax applies to taxes as opposed to expenditures. That's one of the major changes that have occurred in the lost law, over the law, over the case of, since 1979, what was put in place, but this was in the level of the case from 1984. So, the first thing we look at is equity. And you see the big numbers at the bottom. I've got all the count, all the cities and the county, and then I've got municipal pool and the county numbers. But the county receives tax relief to help provide, to pay for services of only 24% from your lost distribution. The municipal pool receives 38% of their services, their tax burden paid for from lost. That is neither fair nor equitable, and causes a taxing equity for your county taxpayers when they receive their tax bills. We see, we also have to consider the eight met, eight criteria that are in place. The first three criteria deal with service delivery, responsibilities of the entities. The middle two deal with the changes in lost affecting your ability for your debt, short and long term. The fifth one is point of sale, which the cities push quite heavily as being the generator of the point of sale collection sites. And the last three are service delivery issues that, because lost was written prior to the SDS Act, they've, they've left those in there. They're still included, but most of those issues dealing with service delivery and governmental agreements have been addressed during your service delivery negotiations. One of the things that you'll hear quite frequently, and that's one reason I left it in the slides, is how do we measure populations served? Cities will always say that we're double counting when we count the entire county population, because you have a county population of 112,483 people, county-wide. Now, that's broken out. You have the county population, which is conterminous with the districts of the locals, of the cell, of the local option sales district, but within that, you also have cities, where those city residents are also part of your overall county. So, what we have to do, and the statute tells us that the special service district for the lost is the entire county and municipalities within. So, what we're doing is we're doing a comparison of the components of the special service district. We're not looking at county population. So, for that reason, we do the entire population, we do a distribution based off that. One of the things I do want to point out is cities always want to maintain that the county's share should come from the unincorporated portion. Even in looking at your unincorporated numbers, which was ruled unconstitutional basically in 1978, that's why the law changed, you're not even getting, your current distribution is not even beating your unincorporated population numbers. You're, you're at 82.7 on unincorporated population. Your distribution is only 75% at this current time. On point of sale, this is one of the city's main points, but one thing I want to point out, Georgia is not a point of sale state. Georgia is a point of destination state. If you go outside of the county, purchase a load of lumber or purchase a vehicle, bring it back in for the delivery into this county, then that sales tax comes back to Newton, Newton County. The Department of Revenue does not recognize cities as a tax location or as tax collection site. They only recognize the county. So, it is the entire county. There's no mutually exclusive data that measures point of sale at the sub-county level. Plus, every citizen, every shopper, every store, every restaurant in any of the municipalities is also in the county and receives or, at some point is eligible for county services that have to be paid for out of your general fund. The cities also have additional revenue to pay for these services that they have to provide in addition to the lost. They have franchise fees that are available to them that are not available, that they're available in a limited capacity and limited usage to the county. They have general business licenses. The cities are covering 4.6% of their total budget from those fees. The county is only covering 1.38, but you have to remember that the money that you receive has to be used in your unincorporated area. It's not to be used in the overall general fund budget allocation. The city of Covington also has a great deal of transfers from the utility funds going into the general fund to subsidize their county, or their city operations. In 2021, it was 34% of their expenditures were covered by the revenues generated from their gas and electric utilities. That also raises a second question. I criteria seven talks about subsidization. Does one group of taxpayers pay for services that benefit another group of taxpayers without the benefit? During SDS, you've addressed double taxation for services you provided in the unincorporated area to make sure that incorporated taxpayers are not paying for those services that primarily benefit them. There's no mechanism in place in law, other than lost, to address issues where the city is using revenues from an unincorporated taxpayer or an unincorporated citizen to provide municipal services. What you find is that the revenues that are coming from the gas and the electric going into the general fund of the city is subsidized, is being subsidized by unincorporated residents. And you can see very clearly in your map, this is the electric territorial territories map that is in the Service Delivery Act, a service delivery agreement, and also is represented before it's on file with the Public Service Commission. If you look at the green area, that is the entire area that is covered by the city of Covington's electric company, electric utility company. If you look at the highlighted area, and this is, this map was produced by the GIS of, from, from the city of Covington. So, that's, I'm relying on their data, their GIS data to where their city limits are. But if you'll see, there's a minister, it's almost probably 60, 40 of the area outside of the city limits that is paying that excess proceeds that are now being used to fund city services that are being paid by an unincorporated resident that does not receive any benefit from those services. And the only, only mechanism to correct that is your lost negotiations. Again, when you look at natural gas, this map comes from the same source from your SDS. It shows, if you look at the yellow area, and then you look at the, the small portion, the entire yellow area, which is your entire eastern, almost two-thirds of the county, is covered by the city of Covington's gas department. And then you look at the small territory, the territorial boundaries of the city of Covington, where the services, where the money that's raised in those other areas is being used to fund city services, you can see that probably that's, I was, I'm going to estimate a 2080, where 80% of the revenue and the users are outside of the city limits. We'd have to do the context, but what you're finding is that your unincorporated residents are paying into these proceeds, and it's built into their fee, into their rates to subsidize city operations and to keep their taxes low. And the only mechanism to recover that is during your lost negotiations. We start during the entire report, and what I've done for the, for the PowerPoint presentation for the meeting, we addressed three issues. Is the condition preceded and the distribution fair and equitable? Does it meet the express intent? Is it rational, does existing distribution, is it rational to meet the current needs? And what is the review of the eight criteria? What does it tell us? It gives us several numbers, but they're all in the same range. Equity would require the county to have 82% lost distribution with municipal pool receiving 18. The per capita distribution per, per person in providing services would require an 85, 15. The changes since the last negotiation calculates down to an 87% for the county, 13% share for the cities. The eight criteria that we looked at would be 78 for the county and 22 for the municipalities. And when you look at the, the unincorporated municipal population, which should be your bottom line number, you should never receive less than your municipal, your unincorporated population number would be 83, 17. Of course, that would be to your discretion and guidance, how you want to approach these negotiations. What my recommendation is, is that you look at these numbers, look at this data. Your attorneys have reviewed my report. I think all of you received it tonight for the first time. I don't know, I don't believe the initial meeting has been set yet as a time. Is that correct? So, we have a little bit of time, but we are going to, if the, it depends on whether the letter was sent to the Department of Revenue Commissioner as to when that clock starts running. We have 60 days. But there are no lost pleas out there that goes, says you have to actually start on a 60-day. You just have to be prepared to proceed to mediation or negotiation with the cities. You, if you've not had that initial meeting yet, that will be the first phase, see where everybody's position is, let them hear ours, then we hear theirs, go back, and then we go on into mediation where each side gives a couple mediators, and you agree on one, and then you have your next steps of meeting. The next steps for this board would be to, in the next week or 10 days, to establish a meeting date with the cities to start the lost negotiation, and internally with your staff and with your, your counsel, and I'm willing, I'm available to participate in that as well, to arrive at what your opening offer will be to the cities. And then, I've already prepared the PowerPoint. All I have to do is plug in your offer, and we're ready to make the case. It's quite, it's a little bit more extensive. It will take me about 35, 45 minutes to make that entire case. That's why I tried to be brief today, and I hope I stayed within the time limits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Samms?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I think Aaron Myers just wanted to kind of come up and just give a quick, brief summary from the report.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Eves, for putting that together for us. So, the, the bottom line, I'd say, as you know, lost has to be renegotiated every 10 years. So, we're in that 10th year now. We have to decide what we're going to do going forward. The prior 10-year cycle, the county had 74% of the revenue, and then the and then the cities divided up twenty-six. Based on Mr. Eves' analysis of the factors involved, that number should be between seventy-eight and eighty-seven for the county. And so at some point, we need to get from seventy-four up to whatever number that the Board of Commissioners determines is appropriate. That's certainly going to take some work and cooperation between the county and the cities. Within the next few weeks, we need to set up a meeting with the cities where they can tell us where they're at on lost, and we can tell them where we're at on lost. Most likely, then we'll have to schedule a mediation to follow up. And at the end of the day, we have to get an agreement by December thirty-first. The consequence, if you don't get that new loss certificate done by that date, is the tax stops. The city and the county both rely on this revenue. If you don't come to an agreement, the tax stops, and you don't get the tax back again, unless you go back through the process of putting it on a ballot like a splosh would be, and the voters have to approve the lost to be reinstated. So this is an important issue. We've got a good team on it, and we'll be working with you as we go forward.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. So it's just a quick question. I'm like you, I'm tired too. With the monies that come from lost, but typically, my understanding is that it's always be, is put in general fund. Am I correct? Why can't it be in a, in a fund, I guess, in an account of his own? Therefore, therefore you can track it and make sure that it's being spent specifically what we collected it for?
Yeah, and the reason for that is that the lost is supposed to be, the idea behind it is everyone pays property taxes. What if we replace some of your property taxes with the sales tax? That's, that's what the voters approved to begin with, it's replacement revenue. So that's why it's used in the general fund, it's not a capital pool of revenue. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't think about it as money that, that needs to be allocated. It is money that represents a tax break that the taxpayers get, and they get that tax break that's paid for by the lost.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but how can I know exactly of what's being paid if, if it's just that? Like if I had a pocket full of money, and I'm going to the stores, I'm just buying stuff, and as I had, took some in my right pocket, some in my left pocket, so with a right pocket for beer and a left pocket for clothes, I wouldn't know where it's going, it could be going on anything.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep track of, of that fifteen, or, I said fifteen, a few millions of dollars to make sure that it is being allocated to what we believe it's being allocated to. So just throw it out there.
Yep, and that is, that's taken care of in, I don't know what the form is, but there's a rollback. We have to actually do the math and show this is how much we got in lost revenue, and this is what the tax exemption was equal to, and we have to show that that revenue is replacing property taxes.
Okay, so you, Bob, another question, so you, so we doing a rollback this time with our budget this time? So lost is covering or paying for some of that rollback?
Well, there's two different types of rollbacks. I think we're getting into the weeds here. There's two different types of rollbacks, but, but the lost is, one hundred percent of that lost revenue is money that taxpayers don't have to pay in their property taxes. So the money isn't, with lost, we don't look at what projects it pays for, we look at what revenues it replaces. If that makes sense, it goes into the general fund because that's where the property tax dollars were going, and instead of putting those property tax dollars in there, we're putting the lost money in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you guys.
Next item on the agenda is item number ten. Cornish Creek, Mr. Brown, if you would, please come on, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
We request approval for a contract that we did in RFP for C2I1, the bidding process to replace aging equipment for our skater system. The contract is not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? Thank you, sir. It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All in favor? Pass five-oh, thanks. Thank you, sir. Next, finance, Ms. Brittany, if you would, please come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I have four budget transfers that we are requesting approval for, and I think that I would like to do four different votes on it, if that's okay? Because some of them are fiscal year twenty-two and some are fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay.
There's four in your packet, and I have numbered them, so I will start with number one. Number one is a FY twenty-two budget amendment, and this is to cover some positions that were filled, that were.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, guys, we're in a live meeting, if y'all could. Thank you, ma'am, go ahead.
And these were for positions that were budgeted in our contingency for new positions line, and these are to cover a, let's see, part-time magistrate judge, a GIS intern, and four public works operators. Are there any questions?
Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh.
Thank you. Budget amendment number two is also for fiscal year twenty-two, and this is to coverage, to cover the overage of our fleet department. The fleet department was over as a whole, so we need to transfer some funds into their department, so this is not a write-up in our audit. And they were over as a whole due to the increase in parts, and then some few, a few costly fire engine repairs. And so that, we need to move in a hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars into their department. And what's covering that is a revenue of eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars we received for reimbursement and damage property, and then the remaining is coming from just an increase in our lost collections because we did receive more than all our lost collections than what we budgeted for. Are there any questions on this one?
Let me get a motion, I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
It's not more so a discussion, I just wanted you to explain what is in type, what entails of the lost collection, because you have some citizens probably have no idea what that is and where the funding is coming from.
Well, the lost collections is obviously the big presentation we just had, but the, that is the one percent sales tax, and we did budget, we budgeted eleven million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand last year, and we ended up getting right around thirteen million. So we do have an additional revenue in that, and that's where the increase is coming from.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Pass five-oh. Thank you.
The third FY twenty-two budget transfer is to just increase our electricity line in our streetlight department by five thousand. We were over, we budgeted nine hundred thousand, and we were right at nine oh four for the year. So we're just moving in five thousand in the expense line, and then we're increasing five thousand in the revenue, because we do receive revenue for the streetlights back on property tax bills. So if you live in a neighborhood with streetlights, then you'll have a streetlight fee, and that's just offsetting. So we did receive more in streetlight fees, and so we're just offsetting the expense with that. Any questions?
Can I get a motion, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh.
The fourth budget amendment is FY twenty-three budget amendment, and this is to move money from vacant positions in the development department to fund a consultant. And I think the county manager can go into detail a little bit more on this.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Samms?
Director White. So, Board, what we're asking for is currently we have several vacant positions in our developmental services department, and we recognize that we've had some challenges, challenges on hiring those key positions, and we are looking at having an opportunity of having that service provided for us by consultants. What we plan on doing is having the budget in place and then going ahead and putting the RFP out to see if we can have someone provide that service for us. We still would like to have those positions out there, but we don't want to impact our ability to provide this service to our, to our organization without having those key positions, and we think it's best to have consulting services in place for us.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
For the consultants that are needed for development services, have they already been put in place or RFP has been put out for a bid?
No, not yet, we plan on placing the RFP out for bid.
Okay.
All in favor? Pass five-oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number twelve, public works. Chester, if you would, please come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
The first, the first item is a, it's the ones requesting Board approval for supplemental agreement with GDOT to receive additional funding for the Yellow River Bridge replacement. The Board has, in the past, has approved the change order with the consultant Atlas for eighty-five thousand dollars, and this is a request from GDOT to receive the funding for that change order. So I'm requesting that the Board approve the supplemental agreement number two with GDOT so it can receive the additional funding for the change order.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion. Can I get a second, please? You fine, can I get a second? Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Item number thirteen.
The second item I have is, I'm requesting that the Board approve a contract with Atlas to provide its after, is post-design services for the bridge replacement project. They are, Atlas is the engineer of record, and they are required to do certain things after the preliminary design, and they have completed the design phase on this project. The services include items such as a seven-day erosion inspection, shop drawing, review, structural inspections during construction, any plan revisions during construction, and the total cost is thirty thousand, five hundred dollars.
And it is budgeted, right?
It is, it would be coming out of the two thousand seventeen splosh.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Next, item number fourteen.
This item is exactly the same as the previous item, except it's for the Snappin' Shoals Bridge. Same scenario, but this is with, with Gresham Smith, who's the engineer of record, and the total is thirty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. And so I'm requesting that the Board approve a contract with Gresham Smith to provide post-design services for a total of thirty-one, one-twenty-three, and ninety-nine cents to be paid out of our two thousand seventeen splosh funds.
Thank you, and it is budgeted. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Chester, you probably can help me with this. When I posted the agenda, I had a resident ask about this bridge. Was this one of the bridges that flooded in the area that's closer to District Three, Brown Bridge? About six years ago?
No, this is, this is the one over Snappin' Shoals Creek, and I'm not aware that it's flooded, that the, no, ma'am.
Because the question was, they said it was fixed before, and they were asking why are we paying for it again? So I'm asking you because I have no idea.
Oh, no, no, this is not the bridge that we repaired.
Just wanted to make sure, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you. Item fifteen, sir.
The last one I have is, again, on the, this, this concerns both bridge projects. And in order to proceed with construction, we have to have a testing service, geotech company onboard to, to do our testing. They'll, the, the testing involves compression, concrete compression test, asphalt test, pile load testing, things like that. And for both projects combined, we have a proposal from Nova for ninety-five thousand, ten dollars. And I've got, also got a proposal from Contour, and they're, they're, they gave us a menu of unit, of item prices that were in line with what Nova had, but I'm proposing to go with Nova with this project. So I'm requesting that the Board award the materials testing contract to Nova for both bridge projects on Brown Bridge Road for a total of ninety-five thousand, ten dollars.
I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Next is item number sixteen. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Chairman. Development Services would like to request approval from the Board of Commissioners to approve this contract with GMC. It's Goodwin Mills Cowood LLC for our Newton County Comprehensive Plan Update. It is at a cost of a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and it will be funded in the general fund.
And it is budgeted.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, thank you. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is item number seventeen. Newton County Sheriff Office, President Sheriff Brown, if you would, please come on up. Number seventeen.
Thank you, Chairman Baines, and all of you that are here tonight. Just want to mention a couple of things. Whether you're aware of it or not, August the sixth, the Office of Sheriff, we were in New Orleans to receive our ACA accreditation, which there was a hundred-and-ninety-eight, a hundred-and-ninety-eight of the agencies there also to receive theirs. But we were one of the few who had a one-hundred total score. There was a total of three-hundred-and-eighty-four standards, sixty-one of those were mandatory, and three-hundred-and-twenty-three was non-mandatory. As always, I thank the employees of the Office of Sheriff for their hard work and their dedication to. and their dedication to continuing to make the Office of Sheriff of Newton County one of the greatest areas in the nation. We're here tonight, very simple. I have with me Ruben Ambello. That's close enough.
Close enough.
Okay. Who's our budget analyst with us. Jarvis, Mr. Sims. Also our Brittany, along with Ms. Birch and myself. We met on last week, is that right, Jarvis? We talked about a couple of things, several things. And I think one of the things moving forward, we need to look at process of how we go about doing things. As I've said in the past, I think it's more traditional. But what I've experienced, and especially at this point in time, being traditional doesn't always work in our favor. And I'll lay that out to you a little bit later. But what we're here tonight on is, and maybe Jarvis and Brittany can help explain why. But we're here, we had four hundred thousand dollars that was remaining in our current twenty-two budget. And we're seeking to just move that money over to our upcoming budget to offset some of the things that the board did not do. We did not receive any funding for vehicles, nor that we received any funding for maintenance of the building. We have more than two hundred thousand, I mean, two million dollars that we asked for, for maintenance, and which we didn't get. And we asked for vehicles in which, I guess that's another story. I think we was told that they was going to be bonded. I don't know where we are, but we're seeking to use that four hundred thousand dollars with whichever one come first. Now, I know we talked about SPOST, we talked about bonding. And however, we don't even know whether the SPOST is going to pass. So we're going to take that four hundred thousand dollars and try to use it to the best interest and hoping that it will take care of the repairs. And it's putting you on notice that if we do have serious repairs, there is no funds to do any repairs at all. Is that by design? I don't know. But I'm just letting you know, that's where we are.
Commissioner Sanders.
I have a question, and maybe Jarvis or Brittany can assist me. So why is there no funds? Is there a reason why there's no funds? I'm just trying to understand the whole concept.
Sure, thank you for that question, Commissioner Sanders. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, there were no funding for the capital projects with the thought process of utilizing some of the ARPA funding to address some of our capital projects, which isn't allowable. We did meet with Sheriff Brown, and he did indicate that there were some needs within, within his department regarding fleet as well as maintenance, the facilities. The meeting went well. We did talk about some processes in place as far as ensuring that when we bring large purchases before the board, you all are aware of it. This particular process, what he's asking for now is not necessarily the norm. But as far as without having any capital, a capital budget for them, we thought it would be the best solution for, for us right now. We also, we'll be bringing back before you all some needs utilizing the ARPA funding, which, again, I want to emphasize, it is allowable. And we have also looked to see what other counties are doing. And they are doing just as what we're asking, utilizing ARPA funding to address some internal needs within the county. Director White is here, if you have any budget questions.
Just to add on, for one, we should not utilize funds that has not been approved already by the Board of Commissioners because it has to come before the board. So if we don't have a final decision on if the board decided to use those funds, then we should not bank on something that hasn't been voted on yet. So that's another one. But my understanding, and with all of us who has, I think all of us here are certified or went to ACCG, is with constitutional officers, if their funds are already allocated to them, they have the right and authority to utilize their funds. So we, as a board, really don't have that authority to stop a constitutional officer from utilizing the funds that have been allocated to them by law. So by the courtesy he comes to us, and we only can manage his budget, but we cannot determine how his funds are spent. That's the only thing we can do is manage the budget. And that's by law. Unless you have something else that's different from what we learned at ACCG and the law, please let me know.
So, ma'am, I'm not implying that my approach with any of our constitutional officers is having a relationship that we are working well together, we're communicating together. And I've expressed that with the sheriff. I've expressed that with any other of the constitutional officers that are, my approach is working well and bringing things before you all in a timely manner that reflect our doing right by our funding from the county. So it was not an argumentative meeting with the sheriff. He brought the concerns with us. We recognize the matter, and that's why we have it here before you all. But it was not any way, and he can indicate that, that we tried to stop his role as a constitutional officer.
Let me just say this.
I got one more. Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sheriff. So the, of the four hundred thousand dollars, what, what, where was the surplus in the, in the previous budget? Where, where, where was that surplus?
Ruben is a genius. I'll give him, let him do that.
Yeah, we had a lot of vacancies. Unfortunately, they weren't filled. And so that, you know, contributed a lot to the surplus.
I, I thought we put, we had something put in place about five years ago that, that surplus money couldn't, had to go back. We, either we had to take, keep the money in the, in the general budget or forfeit the positions. What, didn't we put a resolution in place like five, six years ago?
I'm just going to ask Brittany, can you please come on up?
I think I can respond to that. I don't think so. And, and going back to what Commissioner Sanders said earlier, I think it's the courtesy of the sheriff, it's the courtesy of the sheriff to cooperate with you. And I, I enjoy cooperating with you as it relates to budget. But once the monies or the budget is set and the funds are there for the Office of Sheriff, then it becomes the sheriff's responsibility to spend those funds. Is that right, Patrick?
If the board wants me to respond, I'm happy to. As, as a general rule, once money is budgeted to any constitutional officer, that constitutional officer can expend those funds on any, anything appropriate for the performance, performance of his or her duty. That's, that's the general rule. There, there are some, there are some exceptions to that, but it's a general rule. That is, in fact, the law.
So if you can, please come on up for a quick second.
Thank you. I just would like to clarify the reason. Normally, when the sheriff, like if this was five months ago, this would not have come to the board. But it's the fact that he has leftover money in his FY twenty-two budget. FY twenty-two is done and over. So in order for him to utilize that money, we can't just roll the money forward to FY twenty-three because that's not how governmental accounting works. That's not how government, governmental budgeting works. So what this request is, is this request is moving money from his budget, his county department budget, to a transfer out to capital improvement funds so he can utilize it in other years. And that's why it has to come to the board because we're moving it from his department to another county department and then in turn doing a transfer to another fund.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. C. Well, first of all, I know it's a little late. You know, we thank you for the accreditation that you, that the Office of Sheriff had received. And if my memory is serving right, it's been, you have received one every year for how many years? The credit date? Okay, two thousand ten. And, and, and I personally appreciate that. It makes our county look really good. So why is it that the sheriff has to come before the board every other meeting to, to? I mean, we can't resolve this because he is a constitutional officer. I mean, in fact, he is the top elected officer in Newton County. If he has to come, couldn't it be something that perhaps Ms. Brittany or, or, I mean, could we make him some kind of a motion or something to go for him as long as it's within his budget to receive him or, or any constitutional officer within our budget to receive that, that old money, excess money to move within their budget? Why is it? I guess this, this question is to Patrick, if he can. What could, what could we do in order to keep him from coming to you every other week about excess cash?
So i- it's a matter of, it's not a matter of control of the funds. It's a matter of what your budget refers to, the budgetary control level. So the way your budget is currently set, the board has to shift funds from what, that one budget allocation to the other. That's the way your budget is designed. You could have set that level of budgetary control differently, and you wouldn't have to act on it. But if you don't act on it, your budget's not going to be right. So I mean, you just have to act on it to make your budget right. So I mean, that's what it ultimately boils down to is your budget won't reflect reality if the board doesn't act on it. You know, it might be a good idea in next year's budget, you set a different level of, you know, level of control on the budget. And we probably have to check with the auditors to see what, if any, impact that would have. But as your present level of control set, if you, if the Board of Commissioners does not approve these, your budget will not match your expenditures and it's required to.
I'm just going to say this in, in closing. You know, I've, I've been fortunate enough and don't know if, you know, what next year may bring. But all the other sheriff from, from Mr. Malcolm and the other sheriff who have been sheriff, they never have had this problem. And so, you know, we just, you know, we want to do what's, what's right and decent order. And I think that we need to take a good look at, and we need to do, what we need to do is to make sure that, that Sheriff Brown be able to spend his money and his budget what he sees fit. Thank you.
Jarvis, I mean, Mr. Sims, and then Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'd like to kind of emphasize what Director White stated. This matter would not have come before you all if it had happened three or four months prior. What Sheriff Brown is asking is for using funding in a budget that has closed twenty-two and twenty-three. And that's why we're bringing it before you all for this matter. But if this had happened within four or five months ago, this would have not even come before you all. At no way are we being, holding sheriff hostage over his approved budget. Once his budget is approved, he's approving it and spending it as he sees fit. But this matter is right at the end of a budget year, and that's why we're bringing this before you all.
Go ahead, sir. I got one more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, I, I agree. I think it's ridiculous that the sheriff has to come before us to request a, a permission to apply for a grant, permission to accept a grant, and, and permission to move money around within the fiscal year, however this falls outside the fiscal year. Now, I want to provide the sheriff the four hundred thousand dollars if at all possible. I want to make sure we're not in conflict with the resolution we put in place five years ago, six years ago, not just for the sheriff's department, for the fire department, the other, the other, the other departments as well, I thought. And that was a five zero vote if I recall correctly. So I just want to make sure we're not in violation of some, of, of a, of a, you know, something we put in place five, six years ago. So that's all my concern.
Patrick, you want to?
I, I've not seen that resolution. I'm not prepared to speak on that after.
I don't, I don't recall anything such. I do know that we talked about contingency on positions and so forth. But I, I do not recall anything where we put a, an actual.
I ain't bought it. This is a resolution, I think it is a resolution in place. I think we just need to, so what can happen? If you want to move forward approving this, you can approve this, I guess, continue upon the resolution. That's, if, if there's a resolution in place. Is that right, Patrick? You can do that?
Yes, if you do it that way, and we'll, we'll review it before they make the final trigger. We'll just make a confirmation.
One second, because, go ahead, Sheriff, you had, you had something else.
Yes, I was only going to say, I, I don't recall a resolution being put in place for money being carried over. However, I do recall something about positions being continuous. And I'll, I'll go ahead and open that door. We talked about positions and all, and continued positions. And, and I agree with you, Commissioner Edwards, on those positions. And however, along the way, along the way, those positions supposed to have stayed in the contingency funds. Then those positions are supposed to roll back to us, in which they never did. We lost positions along the way. We lost positions along the way. As it relates to what you said, if it was five months ago, sure. Had we known that we was going to have this five years, five months ago, yes, we would have came forward. I thought we got within the timeframe of the budget closing out. We started on this in, in, in July. The budget closed out when? The actual audit, for the audit?
I mean, the audit, we closed August, the end of August.
Right.
But you have to send the money right here.
So that's, that's where we are. Next thing, we talked about with process. And to let you know where we are when we talk about process. And I hope we can do something about this. Again, when we talk about having to come back before the board for a PO or order cars or whatever the case may be. And I hope Brittany and Jarvis, we all talked about this the other day. For instance, tonight, if you grant that tonight, if we have to come back before the board to get a PO, it will be three weeks, I believe, from tonight, right? If Major would call or someone would call tomorrow seeking vehicles, then we have to, no one is going to put vehicles on hold for three weeks. No one is going to put them on hold for three weeks. As a matter of fact, we had ordered some vehicles back some time ago. But because of the fact that there was no PO available at that time, we lost all of those vehicles. So these are the processes that I'm talking about. This is what I'm talking about. These are the processes. We just need to put processes in place that, and I understand what Patrick is saying when he talks about outlining the budget so forth and the, and the necessary information. But the PO, if you would grant Brittany, Jarvis authorization to move forward, if the money is allocated for that PO, then we wouldn't have to wait three weeks to come forward. Cars are gone. And that's what we have been up against. And we're going to continue to be up against that as long as we operate this manner.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. C. So Patrick, how would, how would we do this motion for the four hundred thousand dollars? So Patrick, how would, how would we, uh, do this motion for the four hundred thousand dollars official to receive? Plus, um, making it easier for the sheriff to receive the, was it the P.O.?
Yes.
I know, yeah, P.O.
Yeah, that's two different motions.
That is true.
I mean, it would require an amendment to the agenda and then a, and then a new motion. But I'm, I'm not sure what the, I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure you want to give or Jarvis wants to accept or Brittany wants to accept authority just to buy cars without having any understanding of the underlying process. So, I mean, this, this become, there, there, there are some limitations on, when constitutional officers use counties' finance people, that they do subject themselves to the county's finance department's procedures. So I, I think what, it seems like what's, the request is for your finance officials to ignore the procedures that are in place for some purchases and some, and for the constitutional officers. And that's, that's an unworkable, in my mind, an unworkable spot to put your finance people in. So, I mean, it would, in a, in an organization, in a county that's much bigger and has budget funds available, oftentimes the constitutional officers have their own financial, their own finance departments. And what you do every year is you just drop a check, maybe not every year, but every month or every quarter, you drop a check to the constitutional officer for that, that portion of the budget, and they administer their funds on their own. And that avoids this problem. But I think as long as we have, as long as our finance department is performing services for your constitutional officers, I think they ought to, I think the rules that are in place to govern when they authorize and when they don't authorize should remain in place.
And I think, just for, uh, clarity, just for clarity, uh, Patrick, what we were just talking about, and I'll give you a prime example. And I think I shared this with, uh, Mr. Sims as well as, uh, Brittany. A prime example would be this. If the board allotted us five hundred thousand dollars for cars, I'm just using that as one example. Allowed us five hundred thousand dollars for one, uh, for, for vehicles. If we called to purchase two vehicles, and those two vehicles cost a hundred thousand dollars, the money is already where, set aside in the budget for what? Those vehicles, that's, that's what I'm saying, right? The money is set there for those, for the vehicles. Someone along the way should have the privilege or the authority to issue a P.O. based on that money is already in that line item. That's all I'm saying. That's, that's all I'm saying, is that Jarvis, the money is in the line item. And if we call tomorrow and we needed a P.O. for two vehicles, and I'm just using that example, fifty thousand dollars apiece, that's a hundred thousand, and you got five hundred here, then we have to circle back around, come back here three weeks from today, hoping that that vendor would have those vehicles.
Mr. Sims.
Uh, yes, sir. I think Ms. White might want to speak on that. I don't know if that's the, uh, process currently. I will say, kind of add it on what, what Patrick indicated. While we definitely want to make sure we are, um, accessible and working well with our constitutional officers, we definitely need to have some processes in place to ensure, uh, our financial ability as a county. And we should have, uh, controls in place just to ensure that, not holding up, uh, where a constitutional officer can do or perform the duties, but also ensuring that we are complying with our audits and things of that nature. I think that's really important, and I think, uh, Director White can kind of speak more about that.
Yeah, thank you. Some of the, um, procedures, obviously, we have purchasing policies that our department follows, but there are also governmental accounting rules that are separate from the county that we have to ensure that we're following too. And to kind of speak on the purchase order thing, generally, what he's asking is how it happens. As long as the, the money is in the line item, then they're free to get a purchase order and they don't have to come back to the board. So if they've got five hundred thousand in a line and they want to go buy vehicles from again, they're free to do that without coming back to the board. I think why we feel like we've been coming to the board more than, um, normal is because we are, the last two times he's came, we've been utilizing excess funds in his twenty-two budget to roll forward to another year, and that's why they're having to come to the board. For instance, last year, we gave them five hundred thousand in capital to purchase vehicles, and I don't believe any, any of the purchase orders never came back to the board, um, once you gave him the five hundred thousand dollars in the budget. So it's not something that we require every time. It's just generally when there's no funding there originally and we need to come back to the board for approval.
Okay. It's Commissioner Cowan, then Commissioner Sanders.
Okay. Patrick, let me ask you this question. One, I've never been comfortable with the way we handle sheriff's finances. I think you're right, Commissioner Henderson. The money goes into the pot for the sheriff and he decides how he's gonna use it. Now, uh, he does have a budget officer, which I'm glad to see that. Is it within our authority or, or just is it good accounting practice on a monthly basis have the budget officer bring to the board, report, and all we do is just ratify that, ratify the decisions and move on? Because I hate to, I hate to be in the discussion about cars and stuff like that, where a man needs a car, go get a car.
So I think...
You know, if he needs a gun, go get a gun. I don't care.
So I think Brittany just said that he don't have to come before the board.
Right.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is just have a report, put it on the consent agenda and just say, we ratify it, move on. That way you've got notice of it, and then Brittany can put it in the report.
That's basically what we're doing. I mean, Brittany is...
No, it ain't what we're doing.
If you could, come back up one second.
Let me just say something. Let me just say something before we move forward. By no way, I'm trying to skate around anything, okay? I, I need to make that clear.
Correct.
Okay?
We know that.
Okay, I want to make that clear.
We're trying to, we're trying to find a way to make your, make it easier.
Yeah. So Brittany, if you could, come on back up. Can you just explain the process again, please?
So just to stress this point, the only reason we are here is because we are going from one fiscal year to another. Because generally, when a fiscal year closes, that money is gone.
Can you say that one more time?
Usually, when the fiscal year closes, that money is gone. However, you do leave your fiscal year open for two months to catch budget transfers, invoices, and things that flow through. So that's why this is on this agenda, because we will close FY twenty-two at the end of this month. So if it does not get approved tonight, then we've, we've lost our window.
I say, make it simple. It's just too cumbersome, what we're doing.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
I'm saying before I, I move in it, isn't this money that you guys found that was not in your budget? Wasn't that something you came back?
No. It was in the budget, it was unused money.
Money that you didn't know you had?
Right, it was unused money. And, 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 and our thought process that we was getting it in before the closing of the budget. The budget closed out in August. That's when the budget closed out, in August.
Okay. All right, moving forward.
And we started this process, we started discussing this process last week.
Patrick and Jarvis kind of took it, the, the words out of my mouth, but I had written here, it's standard operating procedures. I've been saying this since last year when I first got on the board, that we in the county don't have detailed standard operating procedures, or there may be procedures in place and legislation has passed, and we haven't gone back and updated according to the legislation. So we really need to do that going forward to make sure that our processes are in place and that our new processes are, are outlining or aligning with new legislation that's put in place.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Sheriff, is it a possibility going forward, um, that, uh, your, your finance person will kind of look at? Because you, we know when we set a budget, you know how much your budget is for the year from July one to July one. Is it possible that maybe, say, uh, in April or May, kind of revisit that budget and say, okay, well, what funds have we used? What funds haven't we used? To kind of see what is there and then make an assessment at that point on, okay, well, if there's funds we haven't used before June, now let's figure out how we can take those funds and allocate them so that we're not in this position again where we're asking to transfer funds, uh, after, or we're just in that window before the books close? Because I know our fiscal year is July one to July one. And so i- if we're able to assess prior to July one and then use those funds before then so that we're not in this position again, is that possible?
Okay, thank you. And we did. If you recall, we was here, um, a month ago, we was here a month ago for, for the chiller, if you recall.
Yes.
We was here a month ago for the chiller where we had located, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in order to do that. So Ruben is constantly looking at the budget to tell us exactly what's available. So it's, it's no delay on that. But at the same time, uh, we're like any other business, or probably more than any other business. We have things that happen, unforeseen things that happen each and every day. So it may be June that there is five hundred thousand dollars that we have setting back, hoping that we're not going to need it. But in this case here, uh, we need it. Why? Because we don't have any monies to, uh, for maintenance. So if we have a breakdown on tomorrow, a breakdown on next week, are you asking us to deplete our current budget? That's the issue that we're in. If we had funds for maintenance, if we had funds for vehicles, we wouldn't be up here for the four hundred thousand dollars. We wouldn't. The four hundred thousand dollars could have gone back to the capital.
Right, so this four hundred thousand dollars wasn't initially set aside in the maintenance and operations or the fleet line item? This was actually in the...
We pulled it from...
Employee or the...
We just pulled the money from, uh, various line items to come up with these funds.
Okay.
Okay?
I know Mr. Ruben said...
He said some.
Okay.
So we pulled it from just various line items to come up with this.
Okay.
That's, that's, but if we had capital improvement, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Okay, so I think that's definitely something that we can look into going forward. I think, we don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this. I, I think we should go ahead and move forward on this tonight and then look at those processes and procedures going forward on how we can make it, the transactions a little bit easier. And I think that should be the conclusion of this whole discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You making it in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve, uh, the approval of transfer unused funds from FY twenty-twenty-two to capital improvement funds in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, which was unused funds from FY twenty-two, to be moved to capital expenses.
Second.
It's been motioned by, uh, Commissioner Mason, it's been seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Sanders, discussion.
Mine is real simple. Sheriff, as they, as our attorney stated, you have the authority to create a finance department. This might even help with that. I don't know what your staff has until. So other, other sheriff departments do it in the county, in various counties, I've seen it done. So if that helps moving forward where you create your own finance department, they manage, that may, that may assist with the...
We're currently exploring that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone? Discussion, Commissioner Anderson.
And mine too, is very brief. I would like for, uh, uh, Jarvis, the interim county manager, and Ms. Brittany, maybe to get with Sheriff Brown and his, and his staff and see how we can go through this, hopefully, uh, again this year. Because, you know, I, I think it's, it's really just time commerce and, or something that really should, you should be able to just pull that, put in the budget, and we move on and try to figure out a way to do it. But I, I don't believe that those author funding that we've been talking about is going to be that vehicle to get more cars. Because it's taking so long just to, uh, do anything with author funding. So, uh, I think we, uh, and I, and I thank Commissioner Mason for going ahead and making that motion so we can go ahead and access those funds.
Let me just say one thing, and I'm gonna shut up and sit down, but you opened the door. I have found out in life, I have found out in life, and then I see it in, in, in every walks of life. You can force your own self into poverty. You can. And when I say that is if we continue to do the things that we are doing today, we're waiting on Aqua Funds and you just said it, we may never get any vehicles. You can have a pocket full of money, but if you fail to put a roof on your house, what's gonna happen? That's where we are. And we need to get out of that mode of doing things the way we so accustomed to doing. That's all I'm saying. And, and I want to get together with, uh, Mr. Sims and, and Brittany. Yes, we have some ideas for processes that would make it much easier for all of you. And we talked about that the other week. I think we have gotten to the point that we are so used to historical ways of doing things until it causing you a whole lot of time, me a whole lot of time, and all of you a whole lot of time, if we just look at the process of how we do things.
All in favor? All in favor? It's five oh, thank you. Thank you. We got, I got all those? Okay. Next, the citizens comment, this is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make... Oh, we did it. Yeah, we did it already. Yeah. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to come up and make comments. Um, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Board. My name is Nikki Church. My address is one oh five Ascot Trace in the Hanley Mill subdivision. Tonight I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself and, uh, a few of our, um, the homeowners in our association because we, well, our subdivision. We were here for two previous meetings about, um, the conditions of our roads as well as some overgrown areas in our subdivision because we do not have a homeowner association. So I, I really came to acknowledge the board members on this evening for helping us. Mr. Jarvis, thank you. Wonka, um, Mr. Baines previously, uh, we had some issues as well. This part is long overdue, um, that you all helped us with, with some illegal recreational vehicle stand. I texted you several times. And so I really just wanted, we publicly came and told you about the issues. I wanted to publicly come back and say thank you. You helped us to resolve some of those issues last Friday. The gentleman came out with this huge tractor trailer and cut those overgrown areas. Um, we're still working on the road conditions, I think you might speak to that. But I, we just really wanted to publicly say thank you. You guys helped us tremendously and we're very, very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Parker, fifty-five Hanley Mill Drive. Um, I'm also a resident of Hanley Mill subdivision. Um, our road conditions are becoming more deplorable as we speak. The builder that's there, which is Saint Ives Building, they are pulling out now because they have basically did all their construction far as road wise in that area. They had brought in heavy equipment. I counted on one day sixty-four tandem trucks loaded with crushed stone to bring in. Then the next day I counted forty-seven trucks coming in and out. Our roads wasn't constructed like that, and in addition, if, even if it was, our roads haven't been completed from the beginning because the only thing that is there is stabilized base. There has been no top put on the roads. So what we're having now, we have depressions in our roads, some areas three inches, some areas six inches. And what that's creating is hazardous conditions for the drivers because the drivers that are going up and down the main road there, they're dodging these holes and the dips and everything, and they're coming close to hitting curbs, even hitting the kids sometime when they're waiting at the school bus stops. And it's becoming very hazardous. Right now, they, what, what's happening out there, we have the... Right now, what, what's happening out there, we have a condition of what is called alligatoring, alligatoring. Alligatoring is when the macadam starts to break up and starts stretching under stress. If that isn't taken care of, what happens is it gets worse and then when it rains, the water gets some under there, gets under the mud and it just explodes. We have four locations that have already exploded. One is at Hanley Mill Drive and Hanley Mill Lane and the blacktop is, actually came up and it's turning over now. We have another location at Atkard and Hanley Mill Drive and that's right at a bus stop and that has turned over. I spoke to a gentleman today that was from the Department of Public Works Road Division and he gave me a little insight how the county looks to do this. And he said that once they're done, the county will come in and access it and then they will come in and make whatever repairs necessary. That road can wait that long. You have like approximately 12 locations that need immediate attention because if not, there's going to be some accidents, could be fatalities, whatever, but it needs immediate attention. And as she said, they came out and took care of the breaking lots and the overgrown lots and we really, really, really appreciate that. And we came here the last time and your response was tremendous. I mean, you really did a great job far as getting someone out there and taking care of that. But these roads really need some serious attention and one of the locations is the.
Thank you.
Exiting.
Thank you, sir.
212. So if you could take care of that, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you much.
God bless you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. So I, I want to get with that gentleman and this young lady again before, before, before you leave, if you don't mind. But I wanted to say something else tonight, make mention of something else tonight. I've been approached by some of our employees and there's a concern, no good deed goes unpunished, right? When we, when we gave the raises, the, the increases that we have now, I have to go back to my postgraduate days, but salary compression, wage compression. And if you would just, Mr. County Manager, if you would just get with H R and look at that across the departments and see where we've got that going on, probably in our larger departments to include the sheriff and fire. That can be an unintended consequences of what we did with our budget and the increases. So if you would take a look at that and, and see if that exists, one, number one, and then, and number two, what the remedies might be to, to help out with that, if you don't mind. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple announcements. Excited about the groundbreaking that we had at Denny Dobbs Park, the Phase Two Skate Park last Tuesday, August the 9th. The projected completion for that project is either the end of 2022 or the beginning of 2023. So we are looking forward to the completion of that project, the Phase Two of the skate park. Also, we're going to be having our movies in the park at Denny Dobbs Park, August 26th, at 7 o'clock P M. We're going to be showing the movie Cars. We're going to actually have an electric vehicle that's going to be there for anyone that wants to come out and look at the electric vehicles that are now being produced and manufactured. You can take photos with it, look on the inside of it and really get an idea of what those electric cars or vehicles will look like. So we will have one on site. Also, we have the career fair and job placement for our veterans or anyone in our community that's looking for employment on Saturday, August the 27th at St. Paul A M E. If you're not familiar with where St. Paul A M E is, it is in District Two. It is on, near the area of Brown Bridge and Salem Road. And we will be there from 10 a.m. until 4 p.m. We even have some employers that will be able to hire immediately right there. So we're asking everybody to bring your resumes, things of that nature. There's also some training that you can get before the career fair. We have a digital flyer that's out on social media. You can call the number on the digital flyer. They'll tell you what certifications you can get prior to the actual career fair and so that you'll be in a position to be able to immediately take advantage of a job right there on the spot. We're going to also, it has been confirmed that we will have our mobile vet there for our veterans. Our U.S. Department of Veterans have confirmed that we will have that vehicle there for our veterans as well. We are really in a position now where we're having to deal with mental illness. And so this is one of the things that that mobile vet will be able to kind of help assist our mobile veterans that are having a hard time getting into the V A or it's taking them an extensive time to get into the V A. This will be an opportunity where this mobile vet can now go around to different locations and places to be able to provide them with the services that they duly deserve if they are having a hard time getting into the V A. So those are just some of my announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do ask for a little grace as has been given to others because my statement may go over just a little bit. And so I just want to state that. But just before I do that, we will also be having the mobile vet. I announced that in February, the mobile vet was coming to Newton County. It was supposed to be here for Juneteenth, but they were not operating at the time. So the vet is, the mobile vet services will be at St. Paul A M E Church on August 20th from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. Partnering with St. Paul A M E Church for their homecoming service. So I just want to make sure where it also will be there on August 20th. Almost two months ago, citizens spoke up during the comments section of the meeting to express their concerns about gun control and affordable housing. A few of my colleagues, commissioners, including myself and the state of Georgia bonded together to take a stance on this problem and were not afraid to be heard. Resolutions were presented in various counties to where officials are protecting and thinking about the safety along with the well-being of their constituents. Commissioners, I presented a copy of those resolutions last month asking us to get involved and to discuss the issues. The Department of Treasury relaxed the ruling on offer to use for affordable housing. And we need a plan to fully tackle behavior and mental health to provide the programs to assist those with these disabilities. Receiving these funds is a once in a lifetime event, although there has been talk to extend the existence, but that's just talk. It has not been confirmed. We need to hold our partners accountable who are servicing this community, providing services on behalf of the county. That means every partner receiving appropriation from the county and not singling out just a few. There needs to be a checks and balances system for everything that we do and a department needs to be established. This is not only singling out Newton County, it must be an issue across the state because there is current legislation being proposed where officials and various authorities are abusing their power and it's brought forth. Affordable housing does not mean building projects. It includes housing for essential workers, educators, workforce, meaning those who go to work every day and cannot afford to survive in the county where they live due to inflation. Yes, this is a county problem. The county is the umbrella that protects our residents. Commissioners, it's time to stand up for something meaningful. We are more than just building roads and bridges. Recently, there has been many crimes committed by our youth in the county, but we fight against the things that need to be productive, for them to be productive citizens because of the individuals who brought the idea forth. Trying to stop certain things from happening in various communities does not hurt that official, but it does hurt the thousands of people who we state, we represent as One Newton, and that includes our children. Communities with hundreds of homes that don't have the interests in place for safety or for EMS to reach them to, to save their lives or their property. Being elected official is not about the title, the power or the accolades. It's about serving the community. You can't call yourself a public servant if you're not willing to serve. It's time to be the public servant and include everyone making sure that decisions we make are not for selfish reasons, personal gain, but for the people. To my fellow neighbors, the ones we include in the Newton County family, the One Newton family. It's time out for us complaining behind the scenes and to stand up and speak out for what is right and what is wrong, no matter the cost. In the past, many were scared of speaking out because they were singled out from standing up. Well, someone has to stand up to make a difference. It's also time to attend the various meetings within our community to make sure that your officials, authorities, board members and everyone put in place to serve you are making the right decisions regarding our livelihood in this county. That means everyone's livelihood, no matter where they reside. It's time out for personal agendas because we are uncomfortable with change or the people who are in place. If we want to call ourselves One Newton, let's exemplify how we're going to get there. And on that other note, I'm honored also to be chosen to go on another peer-to-peer learning with NACO to Ohio. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. Henderson. I'll be just, just short. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the District Four family that I've been blessed for several years to be a part, a small part of that particular family for standing up with being for Nelson Heights. And they said, no, they said, don't we worry about not getting the funding for months? Because you're author funding, first of all, they said, well, we, we, we know that's not coming through. Don't you worry about getting assistance from the county. Said, we will hold you up. And I thank the people in the trillions, in their families who have came and said, we're going to stand with you and we're going to make this work, God. Thank you, Mrs. Henderson.
Commissioner Cowan. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanders, do you have anything? Do you have anything? I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We stand adjourned.